City of Lawrence, Common Council, January 7th, 2019. It is now 6:30. The meeting is called to order. Can we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray, as we enter this new year, that you just continue to protect this city, protect its citizens, that you lead us through this meeting, that we will be able to conduct the business in a manner that is pleasing to you. It's in your blessed name we pray, amen. I have a quorum. Next on the agenda is election of President and Vice President of the Lawrence Common Council. You have a ballot in front of you, just for housekeeping. Kathy would ask that she would not only sign, but also print, so that she can record this correctly. Are there any nominations for President?
To renominate Lisa Chevus as Council President.
Any other nominations?
Madam President, I nominate Counselor Wells.
Okay. Okay, seen none. The nominations are closed. If everyone could please cast their vote on the ballot and pass it over to your left.
Pass it over to your right.
Your right, or left?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't print my name. Failed.
Seven votes were cast, five for Counselor Chevus and two for Counselor Wells. Counselor Chevus is the next Vice President of the Council.
Thank you so much, Council, for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it and look forward to 2019. Next, we have nominations for Vice President of the Council. Okay, are there any nominations for Vice President?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Giles?
I would like to nominate Tom Chevlot for Vice President.
Counselor Chevlot has been nominated. Any more nominations for Vice President?
I would like to nominate Counselor Wells.
Counselor Wells has been nominated. Any other nominations for Vice President? Seen none. Nominations are closed. Could please cast your vote on the ballot.
Chevlot is the Vice President.
Congratulations, Counselor Chevlot.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's support.
Next on the agenda, we have comments of Council members and special recognitions or resolutions.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Chevlot?
Just a brief thank you to everyone for the speedy recovery for Sharon Freeman. And she had sent me a note on Friday that she got her flowers. She was very appreciative of that. Also want to congratulate Jeff Williams, who on Saturday was at his retirement party. Was 28 years with the Lawrence Fire Department. And it's a long time, so wanted to thank him for his service.
Okay, any other counselors?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Williams?
So, I know we brought this, I brought this up multiple times last year, and I'm going to bring it up again beginning of this year. And that is, the concern I have for the constituents in my district walking across German Church and 56, and the middle of the street, over those bridges, on 56th Street and German Church. We are priming ourselves for something huge to happen. And I think that it's incumbent upon us as a city to take the lead on protecting our citizens in that area. Also, I would like to bring up about the trash that is surfacing along the Pike, in the area of Steak and Shake, and directly across the street. And then also, one other thing is potholes are surfacing, for some reason. I called in and reported the pothole situation in my district, but along 56th Street, north to Pembroke and Pike, what is the plan to have that area repaved? Thank you, ma'am.
Plan along which area?
Ma'am?
Which area?
From 56th Street, north to Pembroke and Pike.
Paved.
Paved, right. On long German Church.
Thanks, Counselor Williams. Are there any other counselor comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Jones?
I have a couple of things. Number one, Counselor Williams brought this up in the past, the bridge on Carroll Road. I know that the administration was working on the drainage, the ditch that runs through the west of there, behind the residents of 65th Street. If there's an update on that. Second thing is, there at 46th and Franklin, is there an update on the construction with the barricades on there, and what is the plan for that? And then the last thing, on the inter-local agreement with the stormwater, especially at 50th and Mitchner, is there an update on that as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Wells?
Come to my attention the other day that apparently the Arts Lawrence have gotten their grant from the Lilly Foundation. And I am just curious as to where we as a council are at with that. It looks like it's, you know, going forward, there's no obstructions. And is this a done deal, or is there any input by the council, or has this come back before the council? My understanding is the Sterit Building is to be involved in this Arts thing, and we're supposed to be, I guess, relinquishing the Sterit Building to this program, with my understanding in the presentation that we had. But my understanding is we just basically voted for them to go forward with trying to obtain the grant, which I guess they have, and I'm just wondering if someone from the administration could enlighten us as to where we are with that now. Is this absolutely a done deal, which apparently it must be, with they've got a $5 million grant? And where exactly are we with it?
Okay, so, yes, I would like, maybe at our next meeting, if we can get an update from the administration on next steps for that project, that would be great. Thank you, Counselor Wells. Any other counselors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of regular meetings of December 3rd and December 19th, 2018. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counselor Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Wells. All in favor by show, I'm sorry. Second, Counselor Jones. All in favor by a show of hands? unanimous? Okay. Next, we have no vouchers until mid-month, so we'll skip over that. Reports of committees. We have a zoning report from Counselor Jones.
Madam President, the zoning committee met tonight, and we are recommending this to go to full council on February 4th at 5:30.
Great, thank you. Unfinished business? Oh, I'm sorry, because it was recommended. Yes, so, is there a motion? He made the motion. Who's the second?
I'll second that.
Second, Counselor Chevlot. All in favor by a show of hands? unanimous? Okay, next, we have unfinished business. There is none. New business? There is none. Comments of the administration? Good evening.
Just a couple of things. We had a fire on December 17th, and I guess I'm up here, a lot of things have surfaced since that date. And the men and women of this department, along with Indianapolis, battled a three-armed fire. And it was a tremendous job. But what I'm refusing to let happen is some of these comments that are appearing, that overshadow, if you can take a tragic experience like that and come out with that, the magnitude of that fire, and have no injuries and no fatalities, is, it just doesn't, it doesn't normally happen, especially on a three-armed fire, and based on a 55-plus facility. And I guess that brings up, I never have had a chance to address the council on this, but Station 40 has come back up. And I'll address just a couple of things, won't take much of your time, but I think it's important for you as a council to know. So, you not only know, but your constituents, which, the people we serve is our customers. But when we took over, I've had several meetings with the Controller and the Mayor, and I kind of asked Station 40 get put somewhat on a back burner, because we had some other priorities come up. And some were worse than we thought. Our administration sat down with our union, and so, before we started dealing with Station 40, there were several things that we came into. We had mold at three of the stations that cost several hundreds of thousands of dollars to get remediated. With that, several hundred thousand dollars, we had aging equipment. There was no rotation plan at all to replace 15-year-old ladders, 10-year-old engines, ambulances, so we had to deal with that. We had plumbing fixtures, like urinal stuff, out of service for anywhere from three to six months. So, we wanted to make sure that we had everything in place before we started something new. And the fact of the matter is, is that this, the Ford area gets surfaced quite well. For example, the response time citywide is between four and five minutes for all the apparatus when they get on the scene. That apartment fire at Benjamin Square, we had a battalion there that was there then less than two minutes. The first engine was there in about 3 minutes and 27 seconds. You could have had a fire engine sitting in that parking lot, and it would not have changed the outcome of this fire. And last year, from January 1st to December 31st, there was 1,092 runs in Station 40's area. 93% of those runs were EMS, 7% was fire. That is taken off our ESO report. And before, it was really tough, because we changed reporting systems, not only us, but several agencies in the county. So, before, you know, I keep hearing, well, the firefighters did this, and they walked for Station 40. They walked for a lot of reasons. One is to, for better living conditions, get better equipment to do their job more proficient. So, they walked for a lot of reasons. And I don't want to look in the rearview mirror, but our union was given a lot of bad information from the previous administration. A lot of that stuff, sometimes they couldn't get the figures, and some of the figures they got were inaccurate. So, like I said, it wasn't just open Station 40. They walked for a lot of reasons, and most of those stuffs are being addressed. And really, the unions and the administration should be, their priorities should be the same, health and safety. So, we've gotten a lot of those things taken care of, but we still got a ways to go. So, I'd like to have a fire station on every corner. You know, we love that. But there's some priorities we've had to take care of. And like I said, I went to the Controller and the Mayor and pretty much asked them if we could address some of these other problems. We had, back when these stations were built, we had moving concrete. They didn't use rebar. It was laid on dirt. Some of the concrete was only three inches, you know, thick. We had some no hot water in some of the stations, roof repairs, roof replacement. So, there's been a magnitude of things that we've had to address. And like I said, you know, part of this is because I just feel like we had to take care of some issues before we move forward. But it's important for you to know that. And I would also offer, I've got all the facts that you need, so if any counselor at any time wants any facts about that station, the runs, it's so easy, Chief Hardy is able to pull anything you want, by station, by zip code, by anything. And those reports are the reports. The good thing about it is, we're only using one reporting system, so it's easy to track that stuff. Where in the past, it was kind of hard because of the different reporting systems. But like I said, I'm making that offer, not only to make some of these statements so you'll know, but in the future, there's anything that you, the counselors want to know, we have, we're totally transparent. Anything you want to know, we'll make sure it's at your disposal.
So, out of that 7%, how many were actually fire runs? Like for fires?
I don't know if that... Chief Hardy, does that, oh, the seven, four? Four actually working incidents out of the seven. And one included the Benjamin Court, because this report went to December 31st, and that fire happened on December 17th.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of stuff that happens beyond our scenes, but all the stuff that I'm telling you can be fact-checked, because all the money we spent came through this council. This council had to approve all those expenses. So, like I said, I've got a list from everything we've done, from January 1st to 16 to present. And like I said, all this stuff is things you've authorized by your vouchers, and like I said, I've got a list of everything, so I'll make that offer to this council, that anything you need, I'll be more than happy to show you. Okay, thank you.
Could you just clarify something that Counselor, President Chavas just asked?
Sure. Go right ahead, Counselor Chavas.
She asked you what percent. I just want to make sure that I understand it right. And Chief Hardy said it was four. I want to make sure that wasn't four fires, it was 4%. Because you, I think...
It was 7%.
7%. And four of those fires were actually working incidents.
So, of that 7%, four of that was fire. 4% or four?
Four total runs that were actually fired.
Okay. Just want to make sure, I was listening to percentages, and then it switched to...
And the other thing to remember here, there's a thing called ISO, it's insurance services organization. It's, they have no dog in this race, except for, they're the ones that compile the figures for the insurance companies, for homeowners and businesses, for your fire insurance. We're at a rating three. Couple departments in the state have a rating one. And some of the stuff that they told us, we are, we're already working on, we're really hoping in the next couple of years that we attain a two. And that's with the way our apparatus is spread out throughout the city right now. So, that's huge, because that's going to be a cost savings to the residents and the business owners in the city of Lawrence.
I got a question, Chief. What is the rating between a three and a two?
The lower the rating, the rating's from zero to nine, the lower your classification is, the less expensive your rates are. So, we're at a three, almost to a two, and stuff that we were working on, the organization had told us where we fell short, we were already working on some of those things. Number one, there wasn't very good record-keeping, and it has to do with hose testing, your trainings, your apparatus, your hose, your hydrant flows. It's just a combination. It takes about two and a half, three months to compile everything they use to come up with that rating. They use dispatch, your response times, the engines you have, the ladders, all that, all that come into play.
Has that rating changed over the last three years?
No, it has not. It's stayed a three. They only do these, they only do these now every, they do them every three years. So, we'll have the next rating in three years, which I'm really hoping it'll be a two, a two. But even with the fire engine not in that station, we still remain to three.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
I'm David Hoffman, the Chief of Police for the Lawrence Police Department. I don't have a presentation for you necessarily, but I just wanted to get out ahead of some comments that I've been hearing a lot about regarding New Year's Eve shots fired, runs in the city of Lawrence, particularly 15 minutes before and after midnight. That is a major concern. We try to get out ahead of it in all of our communications, our social media platforms. We encourage everyone to not do that. We talk about the dangers associated with that. I've seen firsthand the dangers. In 2008, when I was a patrol officer with the Indianapolis Police Department, I responded to St. Francis Hospital on New Year's Eve. Their emergency room had a lady that had been struck by a bullet from above into her shoulder. A million-to-one chance that that happens. But I've also seen police cars, civilian cars, homes shot. It is a major concern. But on the other hand, when people ask, well, what are the police doing about this? There's not a lot we can do. I hate saying that in my line of work. But when you think about what we're faced with, we're faced with homeowners who are first, anybody who has any propensity to go out and shoot their guns on New Year's Eve in their backyards are very difficult to interdict. First of all, their guns are in their homes. Secondly, they usually do it in a position that's not visible from the street, where police officers are patrolling. And thirdly, they're, obviously constitutional protections prevent officers from just going around, walking in people's backyards without cause, trying to catch them. So, it's quite a quandary. All we can do is encourage people not to do that every year, try to stay out ahead of it. This is one of those things, not even increased enforcement can help. I can't go into, say, a high-crime area and tell my officers to do more traffic stops and try to get illegal guns off the street, because inside people's homes is a lot of times where those guns are stored. So, we're doing our best. It's a major concern. Obviously, it is every year. We had no reports that were, no incidents that reported in an injury or a damage to property type of a run the next day in Lawrence, although I'm sure they probably have happened. It's hard to tell. When a rifle round comes down and somebody's, through somebody's shingles, you know, you might have a leaky roof, and you never know why, that could be why. But I at least wanted to let you know, we don't take it lightly. We're very serious about it, but we're very constrained into what we can do. So, next year, next December, we will be out there pushing that, you know, that message that it's reckless, it's dangerous, it's illegal, and if we catch you, if we can catch you, you'll face charges. But I just wanted to kind of brief you up on all of that, because I know your constituents are asking you about it, especially this time of year. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but for right now, I at least just wanted to address what we're doing.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Hoffman?
Chief Hoffman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The, I guess, the outbreak of some of this, of the crime in these apartment complexes, you know, we've had, what, one on Franklin Road has had maybe three murders in six months?
Yes, sir.
My question is, and this is one that I posed to one of your deputy chiefs, I don't remember which one it was, but my understanding for these apartments to get subsidies from, I guess, either the federal government or from the state, is they cannot be an undue burden on the municipality in which they are in.
Right.
Is the city of Lawrence looking into that? I mean, can we not put a little pressure on these complexes to provide maybe some security and take the burden off of our police department?
Yeah, so one of my goals and objectives for our new crime, our Director of Crime Prevention is to really amp up the efforts with our apartment roundtables. And what those are is monthly meetings for all apartment managers to come to the police department, and we provide resources and education to them about things that are available to them at, you know, to things like video surveillance, you know, crime watch meetings, those kinds of things. As far as federal subsidies being hinged on a certain number of police reports, I'm not aware of that. I'll be more than happy to look into that for you. The thing, I know you're talking about the apartment there on 47, 4800 Franklin Road.
Yeah, about 4800 Franklin Road, yeah.
Typically, it's a very quiet apartment complex. And you're right, we had three murders in there. A complete anomaly, very difficult to connect dots and figure out cause and effect. But, you know, like I said, we're doing our best. And as I mentioned, we are going to ramp up our efforts in apartment complexes this year.
Is it possible that patrols in the adjoining neighborhoods could be stepped up more? I've got, that's in my district, and I've got many constituents that are, you know, after dark, they're scared to go outside, you know, for, you know, possibly getting hit by a stray bullet or something. And I mean, that's what I get from the phone calls, some, you know, the people living around there. You know, they can't understand some of the things that, you know, that are being done in the city, but yet, you know, they're scared to death to go outside after dark, and I feel their frustration.
Well, I do, too. No one should have to live in fear. And we put our officers where the dots are, where the hot spots are, is where we're putting our officers, and we're, you know, we're doing our best. But we'll hit it from a crime prevention standpoint, and we'll hit it from a law enforcement standpoint, in terms of, you know, stepped-up patrols.
Would you let me know if you find anything out about this, about the subsidies, doing the undue burden?
I will look into that and have a report for you at the mid-month.
Yeah, it seems to me that, you know, I was involved in, when they were trying to get their permits and trying to get their zoning changes and all that, it's been some time ago. But it seems to me that was put on the table, that they would not put an undue burden on the municipality. And, you know, police and fire, for example.
I'll look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, if you could let us know, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hoffman.
Chief, I got a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
That apartments, what's the name of that apartments? I can't think of it right offhand.
The Queensmead?
One on Franklin, is that?
Canterbury.
Canterbury. Queensmead was the road.
That's the street.
Yeah, right. Where the double occurred this summer.
Administration of that apartments, do we have a good relationship with them?
Yes, we do. Yep.
Thank you so much, Chief Hoffman. Appreciate your time. There's no other comments of the administration. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Linda Moore. It's 4909 Leon Drive. Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and hopefully the council can act in a really civil manner this year, and since we've been at this as long as we have, do some things that are good for the city. We continue to have a lot of problem with people moving out and leaving trash at the streets, and by the time it gets ticketed and everything, it's the three or four weeks, so the big trash may come by and pick up one piece of it. I have neighbors right now that put a big couch out last week. This weekend, they came through and put out a whole bunch more stuff. I made a complaint last week to the department, and especially since they're not in the house, it's going to be harder to get ahold of these folks. But I've got all this trash now sitting out across the street that's been soaked in rain, and nobody's going to want it. Chief Hoffman addressed a lot of things with the gunfire. Our gunfire in the Brookhaven area started at 9 o'clock, New Year's Eve. We had a, we had a run that evening also. I was a little bit afraid for the EMTs down there, because you could hear gunfire in the background. And the closer it got to 12, the worse it got. And I got phone calls, are you guys okay? Are you okay? I'm afraid to put my dog out. I've got someplace I can go, but I'm afraid to get out in the car to go to another neighborhood. So, I, you know, it's one of those hard things, and I could hear it starting to the south, closer to 46th Street, and the closer it got to midnight, the closer it got up to 52nd Street. And there were some that were directly behind me. And that damage to the houses, as far as roofs, will not show up for quite a while unless you get an inspector out there and get them fine-tooth combing. But we've had, we've had ceilings collapse in the neighborhood before because of leaks in the attic areas, and eventually the bedroom ceiling comes down, or a room's ceiling comes down. So, I'm not sure what the solution is, but it was a very scary night, and I worry about our veterans who are in these areas, that it could trigger things that we don't want to... that we don't want triggered. So hopefully, next year, we can get on it and get some statements out, whether we have to send it out in the utility bills, statements. But I don't know how many people actually look at that stuff. And as we quit sending out utility bills and people go to email automatic billing stuff, we're not going to have that contact with people. But with our population in our neighborhoods, and as much as it changes, people don't realize, they see the city of Indianapolis give out the notices, don't fire your guns. But they may not know what Lawrence actually says. Because we're not on the news for those things. Say, hey, it's a Marion County ordinance or it's something like that. So hopefully, before 4th of July and New Year's next year, we can get some public service out there and get it settled down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're adjourned.